Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the January 13th meeting of the Kingston Select Board to order. Please rise and join me in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the first place.
Welcome, and let me introduce the table to you. To my left is Laurie Schwett, board member; Glenn Koppelman, board member and vice chair; I'm Ellie Alessio, your chair; to the right is Peter Bakie, who's a member of the board; and our administrative assistant, Susan Eyre. We have a couple appointments this evening, and the first one is with Mark Zankel from and James Hesselbeck from Revision Energy regarding the landfill solar project and next steps. Come on down, have a seat. There's microphones in front of you. Please press the button, let it turn green, and just keep it right in front of you, it should be clearly heard.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Great. Thank you for having us tonight. I appreciate the invitation, thank you Susan, to give you an update on where things stand with the landfill solar project and to see if you would are interested in considering putting a warrant article forward for your upcoming town meeting, which I recognize the timing is very tight for.
I'm having a hard time hearing you. Just bring the mic up a little bit closer to the back.
Sure.
There you go. It should be fine there.
Yeah, let me know. So you'll recall that about a year ago, we signed an option agreement with the town of Kingston. That option gave Revision the opportunity to begin to develop the landfill solar array. When we say "develop" in the solar world, we really mean two things. One is to explore the interconnection process by which the array would interconnect it to the grid to see, is that possible? What would it cost? And then the second is to begin the permitting process. And we've done a number of things since that time. We designed the system. What you see here is the design that we submitted to Unitil for interconnection. This system, if it was built like this, is four megawatts AC, just under five megawatts DC system. That's the largest system that we feel the landfill could accommodate. So the portions of the landfill that don't have solar on them are either too steep, north-facing or otherwise is not conducive for hosting solar panels. This array has about eighty-four hundred solar panels on it, if it was to move forward like this. So we designed the system. We did wetland survey to understand what ports of the property would be off-limits due to wetlands issues. We submitted the interconnection application, and then when you do that, you then get a study agreement back from the utility. We signed that. We paid for that study to be done. That study was completed in the fall, and there were some pretty substantial upgrade costs that would be needed to build the array as proposed. So we then followed up with Unitil and asked them if they could do a supplemental study to look a little bit more at those interconnection issues, and was there a system size below which we could interconnect with, I guess I would say, a more modest amount of interconnection cost. And that study is ongoing right now. We expect it to be complete in mid to late February. We don't control the utility's timeline, so while I wish it was done today, it's not. So that's what's happened. We're now in pretty active conversations about the project with Unitil, about the interconnection process, where we can make things work better, and we're prepared to continue this work. Once we get the final interconnection study, assuming that there is a size of system that we think we can build and finance, our next step would really be to begin the permitting process. And the permitting process is both at the state level and the local level, but principally at the state level, where we, to build on a landfill, you need an alteration of terrain permit and a solid waste permit. That's a very lengthy process, about a year-long process typically. It's pretty expensive. So at that point, Revision would be looking at investing probably upwards of $100,000 or more to go through that permitting process. So that's kind of what gets us today, and why we felt like, while we don't have a 100% clear picture on interconnection, we feel like we know enough now to say, we think there is a likely pathway for an array at the landfill. We think we could deliver $35,000 a year of revenue to the town in a manner that would allow us to finance and build that array. And to keep the process moving forward, the next step we would typically do with the town is to have the select board get authorized by the voters to give you the authority, but not the obligation, to move forward with a lease agreement. Let me pause and just ask James if there's anything important that I missed there, and then just love to sort of hear your questions and talk further.
Before James goes, just a quick clarification on one thing that you said, and it addresses one of the concerns that at least one board member had. You talked about a solid waste permit. I'm assuming that's the one from DES that's required when you do something like this on a landfill, a cap landfill. They would need to bless it because if it isn't built the right way, things can happen to the cap and the liner and so forth and so on. And I know that that was at least one of the things Peter had concerns about. And also, just to be clear, you know, a lot of this was discussed at length through a very long process with the energy committee, formerly the solar committee, that went through a fairly comprehensive RFP, whatever, process, selected Revision Energy, and Revision was then given the authority to go ahead and start doing the engineering design, doing the work with, you know, what you talked about, Mark, the discussion with Unitil, and coming up with what an anticipated design would be, and you've got that now.
Right.
So I just wanted to make sure that I understood when you said waste permit from waste, solid waste, that that was the DES permit regarding citing this on a landfill.
Yes. That's exactly right. So this DES, our state has a very rigorous permitting process for solar in general, and particularly for solar on landfills. What's, I would say what's good here is a couple of things. One, Revision has built a number of solar landfill projects, so we have a fair bit of experience with this, both in Maine and now in New Hampshire. We are just about completing Exeter. Exeter landfill your neighbor. We are developing and doing landfill projects for the town of Bedford, on the town of Jaffrey. So we have a fair bit of landfill experience, and the state has a fair bit of landfill solar experience now. We have, I would say, worked through the permitting process with the state. We work with, we have been working with Novus Engineering, which I would think it's fair to say has the most landfill solar geotechnical experience in New Hampshire, and they would be our civil consultants on this. And yeah, I mean, what the state, their primary interest is to make sure that nothing happens to the cap, and so they run us through the wringer to make sure that nothing happens to the cap. So that is the process that we would launch, and it's hard to launch that process unless we know that the town actually really wants to move forward with this, which is why we're talking about the warrant article, because it is such a time-consuming and costly process to go through.
Who pays for the, who pays for the system upgrade on the power lines to go into that facility? It's going to be needed to be done. Who pays for that?
The costs of any utility interconnection upgrades are borne by the project, so they would be borne by Revision or essentially the investor and owner of the array.
Who is that?
Well, the way that we work is, once we get further down the line, we have a number of mission-aligned investors who are, you know, this is what they do. They fund, they finance clean energy projects. They are almost all in region, so we would basically work with them. We've already started to test the waters with a couple of them on their interest in this project. There is interest. So I would say, there's probably two scenarios. One is, one of those mission-aligned investors who owns and operates solar arrays, but I can't tell you who it is today because we don't, they need to really know what's it going to cost to build this system. The other opportunities, we have utilities, you know, and as you know, Unitil, Revision is building the largest solar array in the state of New Hampshire right now for Unitil. Unitil has expressed interest in having more renewable energy in its portfolio, so they would be another candidate. But whomever it is who owns it would be responsible for the upgrades, to directly answer your question.
Hi. First of all, sorry again to have Jack, his mother, is running the library trustees meeting right down the road, so we are dividing and conquering. My apologies for distractions. I think that's a great summary. I think there, I'd add three brief highlights. One, this is typical solar development process. The select board may recall how long it took us to go through the state AOT process with the Towel Road project, which is similar in size but different in financial structure than this one. So just to reiterate, this is not a surprise. These are typically two- to three-year development cycles. So that's point one. Point two is just reminding the select board and any members of the public that, to date, Revision Energy has borne 100% of the hard costs of this study, and that's our intent to continue. This is, this request for a warrant article gives the select board the authority to negotiate, but again, not the requirement until we can finalize exact pricing. As Mark highlighted, we think we can hit that floor of $35,000 of revenue to the town, and there might be additional upside to that if we're able to figure out a better balance on system sizes to utility upgrades. The utility upgrades that make up the bulk of that multimillion-dollar cost is what's called reconductoring, so basically thicker wires on the utility line. That is expensive, but better news than a substation upgrade, because a substation upgrade takes many years and many more millions of dollars, so we think that there might be some opportunity. We don't know yet. We've engaged Unitil. They are looking at this too, because they are interested in. The third thing I'd add, timing does matter in both our ability to get these projects done, you know, even if we got the warrant article approved in this town meeting cycle, as Mark said, we then have to undertake eight-to-12-month DES AOT project and permitting thing. So we're talking 2026 construction at best. We are unsure of the long-term tax incentives that help investors provide some dollars back to town for projects of this. We think we have clarity for 2025, and there's safe harbor opportunities, but as we move into 2026 and 2027, we don't know what will happen, frankly. So that is why you might be feeling a little urgency from us, not just because it's bedtime.
So I'd like to add just a couple of comments, and this is, again, for the benefit of my colleagues primarily here, who are going to have to vote on whether or not to put this warrant article on. The discussion and all of the preliminary work that was done at the solar committee with Revision, the numbers that you're proposing here of the at least $35,000 of revenue annually is essentially the number that was arrived at during all of the discussions with the solar committee. Those are the numbers that we were presented with, which translates to, after 25 years, it was like 1.2 million, and after 30 or 35 years, it was whatever the number was.
Yeah, it's about 1.15 million after 25 years, 1.75 million-ish after 35 years.
So that number hasn't changed in any of the discussions, and you know, from the time that we started this process over a year ago with you guys to now. So I think that's important for folks to know that, you know, that
We're in the range.
There's no shifting of those numbers. We're still on target for that, and that's, and that's what you're asking for in the warrant article.
If I'm not mistaken, so just the numbers you're throwing around here, so $35,000 a year, is that what it is?
That's, that would be lease revenue to the town
Okay.
From the project.
Okay.
Well, just a real, real quick reminder of the model. An investor would own this array and pay the town a lease payment of $35,000 a year or potentially more as we navigate the final steps of the utility. So there's no expense to the town.
Would it be fair to say, because it's on leased property, that if anything happens to that site, because you don't own the site, we own the site, now we're responsible for that? Because it's leased property?
Yeah, that's a good question. So the lease itself, which would be between the town and the array owner, is, really clearly lays out all the responsibilities of each party, and I think the short answer is, you know, you'd want your attorney to look at this, of course, but the liability for any impact to the cap as a result, or to the landfill as a result of the solar rests with the owner of the array.
Do we have a copy of that lease that you're talking about, that you're referring to?
Yeah, that we can share with you.
That'd be nice to see, because you want us to make a decision, and I think there's a lot of unanswered questions that personally, I'm not ready to make a decision until we take a look at that lease and have our attorney look at that lease.
Yeah. So the, I totally get that, and I think, you know, it's a long legal document, as you would expect. We can send it to you tomorrow.
All we're being asked to do, though, all we're being asked to do is to ask the voters to give the board the authority to negotiate this, should a design come forth that works and will pencil out as a project. At that point, the discussion of all the terms, the agreement, the monies, and if at any point the select board doesn't want to move forward with it, they don't have to. So.
Go ahead, Laurie.
I recall that when we did this, we had, we had provided an example lease and that we had sent it to a lawyer last year for review.
I think we did give you the, we have a template lease. It's one that we've
So we had, we had performed, at least on the basic lease, last year, we had performed that.
Yeah, and I quite honestly do not remember a thing that was in that lease, and I'm really uncomfortable about agreeing to this now because it's last minute. Last minute in that we have a deadline tomorrow, basically, to put any warrant articles in. We haven't had a chance really to talk with community members. They don't really know what's coming. They're going to see a 35-year lease for $35,000 a year on a landfill that we're still responsible for. I'm uncomfortable agreeing to do that right now. If it was next year and we had a few months, had some hearings, had some input from the community, that'd be one thing. I also got a letter from Pam Brown, who attended a meeting with Revision and the solar array. Okay, let me, let me read it to you so you understand. She's raised some issues that concern me. About Revision and the solar array, I looked it up. In last March, voters authorized the select board to rent or lease the landfill for the study of a solar project for a term of up to five years. Revision Energy's rep, Mark, I think that was you, right? I might have, told the energy committee on November 24th of this year, the 24th, excuse me, that Revision was still unsure of the size, the megawatts of power that we placed there, nor the net benefit return we'd earned. And you've agreed, you've already, you've confirmed that. He reported the meeting that Unitil said they will charge about $2 million to connect the array to grid, or a million or three million, depending on the size of the megawatts. Mark also warned that the conditions of the lines at the substation to be used are unknown, and the lines may need reconductoring, meaning more costs could be involved. Mark also said that his investors may have a firm report by the first week in January on these issues, but more issues could come up. And he stated that his investors' views are changing regarding the solar project, but then he turned right around and declared the company does not want to wait another year, which, from a business perspective, I totally understand that, because you want to keep moving forward in the project. I just, I feel uncomfortable it's going to be this week, to be real honest with you. So, I mean, those are her concerns in general, and, and you're right, I know we said the lease will change the terms, but we don't know what are the terms. I don't, 35 years is a long time to commit to a lease at one rate, to be real honest with you. I would have, never have done that in the private sector.
Yeah. Thank you, and I totally hear you.
I'm not opposed to solar, you've got to understand, but I, I wear a different hat on this side of the table, and I'm trying to protect you and other citizens in the community. We all are, not just me. We all are in the same boat.
And I feel like we're here to give you information. This is an opportunity for the town. We'd love to see it move forward. If you choose not to move it forward this year, we understand, it will put the project on ice for a while, and that usually isn't a good thing, but it doesn't mean it can't, it doesn't mean it won't move forward, it just means it will be delayed for a while. But let me, maybe just to take on a couple of things. I don't know that I would say that that was a 100% like accurate representation of everything I said at that meeting.
Well, that was your understanding.
But that's fine. You know, I think the gist is right, though, that, as I said, their initial study showed some fairly significant upgrade costs. We have been working since then, both with Unitil, to see is there a size below which we would have much lower costs, but also, we have been working with our investors and potential owners of the array to say, if we kept it at this size with these upgrade costs, is the project financeable? And I think we feel like we're close on that. If I didn't, then we wouldn't be having this conversation today. So I don't, I think we would say, like, we have a healthy set of investors that are looking to invest in renewable energy systems, and this is a good opportunity for them. We don't expect that interconnection costs would be higher, so that part of the letter, I guess I would just respectfully
Yeah, she said anywhere from one to three million is what she indicated.
Yeah, I don't think that's, that's not what we would say or expect. They gave us an interconnection estimate, and those estimates tend to be pretty good. We're now trying to see if we can bring that down, but once you get an interconnection estimate from the utility, they tend to be pretty solid. You know, they can change a little, but they tend to be pretty solid. But at the end of the day, yeah, I mean, the process with a, our lease agreements typically have a year-one lease rate, and then they have a 2% a year escalator that goes up with. They're not designed to track inflation. They're designed to track the projected increase in the price of electricity, because what an owner is doing is they are taking the revenue from the electricity and using a portion of that to pay for a lease. So land leases for solar, 2% is what we pay. That's actually on the high end. We often see other companies do a percent or no increase, but we have a 2% escalator because it's more or less tied to the approximate projection for the cost of electricity over time, and that's what this would reflect. And, you know, again, like, you have to decide you're moving, you're comfortable. I think for us, the warrant article, it gives you the authority to negotiate a lease with us, it doesn't give you the obligation to sign one if you do not satisfy with it.
But we got that last year. I mean, they gave us five years to work things out with you, with Revision, and I was very comfortable with that. That seemed a reasonable amount of time. I'd almost suggest that we had monthly reports of you that we could publish in our minutes and include on our website, educating the community is what's going on. The biggest fear is if we agree to a solar array, my biggest fear is if we agree to a solar panel array on that property and something goes wrong, that lining is broken. We're on the hook. The town of Kingston's on the hook, not Revision Energy. That's what scares me about this project.
Yeah, that's a valid fear, and I apologize for standing. I would argue, and this is pretty clear in the lease agreements, that having a multimillion-dollar revenue-generating asset owned by somebody else on top of the landfill actually provides the town a significant additional safety net.
How so?
Because that owner has six digits of investment that is based upon that solar array generating the electricity that we projected. So they are, that's why we go through all the DEP things, is to try and identify either weak areas or, you know, differential settling areas to avoid during the design or construction phase, to assure that once the array is constructed, we're not going to have any surprises. So right now, today, if something went wrong with the landfill array lining, or the water mitigation plans, or the drainage plans, it would be the town of Kingston alone, and I think the funding, right, there's a landfill fund there, that is responsible for that.
But in the meantime, the business, the investors would have generated a significant, I would assume, revenue stream. I mean, of course, they amortized their investment over a period of years for the costs and so forth, but still, it's the town of Kingston, unless we have a very profitable lease arrangement, it's not going to benefit from that revenue stream. We have to rely on the taxpayers to support that endeavor. That's not to say we can't work something, you know, say, we won't be benefiting directly.
I don't quite understand that piece, because the town benefits from annual lease payments and has no expense associated.
$35,000 is not a, it's not a
Cost of risk.
Yeah, it's not a huge amount.
Yeah.
Not a huge amount.
Yep.
And not on $10 million budget, today's budget, never mind five years from now, what it might be.
But compared to an asset that is not generating any money now and it's costing us money, that's not bad.
I can argue with that, but I don't disagree with you. You're right.
And the number, the number that's being proposed here is a minimum of $35,000, and during the design process and whatever the final design would come up to be, and the select board would have to be on board with negotiating that and agreeing to it, and if, again, it's completely out of the discretion of the select board at the time, whoever's in the seats at the time, to negotiate that.
I'm just saying, I feel rushed, and we've done too many things rushed the last couple of years. This is not the first time, but we have rushed, and I, that's how I feel right now, rushed. Did the, did the Unitil array that went up down in southern part of Kingston have any impact on this decision here?
No.
What they're doing on here?
It's a totally separate circuit and totally separate process.
Different substation.
How long have you been working on this?
This particular project? Well, the conversation with the town predated me, actually, my time at Revision, because there was an RFP, as you were saying, Glenn, and we looked at the landfill, we looked at the town's energy use and other opportunities. So that actually, I think, started maybe four or five years ago.
Initial conversations were like nine years ago.
I'm trying to figure out why this conversation didn't happen two months ago, and why the night before we're supposed to make a warrant article, make a decision right now.
Yeah, the reason, oh, I understand.
That's what I'm trying, I mean, we're trying, I mean, this is a, this is a big decision. I mean, I understand why it wasn't there two months ago, so we could have, we could have looked a little bit more into it, and maybe made a more of an educated decision versus coming in the night before it's due.
I appreciate that, and I apologize. I wish we could have had this conversation two months ago. It would have been a little less informed. We didn't get the, we didn't get the interconnection study results, the initial study results until
You still don't have that, though.
Well, we got the initial study results, but we didn't get those until mid-November, and we had the conversation with the energy committee. At that point, we hadn't even had a chance to test those with, you know, with potential investors. So we've done some work since then in terms of getting the additional study going, and we were hopeful, Peter, that we would know by the end of the calendar year, that we would have that additional study done. And so, in retrospect, And so, in retrospect, probably should have come and, and talked to the select board in December, I appreciate that, we just were hopeful that we would have had the final, the follow-up study complete. We then found out it was going to be late February, and with an idea of not letting another year go by, we reached out. But I, I totally understand, it's late, and you have to do what feels right to you, we just want to provide you as much information as we can, and kind of to weigh the pros and cons as you, as you make a choice.
Good, well said, we, we didn't have the information, not specific to this project, but if you did look at PUC hearings, there's actually an open case in front of the PUC complaining against the length of time it takes utilities to review and get back to these studies, because this scenario is unfortunately not unique right now across the state of New Hampshire, and the Department of Energy is trying to resolve that.
It's my understanding there are quite a few departments in Concord that are slow in responding to different projects coming along the way.
That is an accurate understanding, yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
We could sit here and continue talking, I don't think we're going to be progressing any further, I, I, I'm going to make a motion, just so that we take action on it, unless you'd prefer to make a motion, or if you would like to.
No, I, I didn't know whether there was anyone in the audience that wanted to speak to the issue.
Oh.
We have, public comment would be coming up, but if someone, does anyone like, would anyone like to speak on this issue now before we take a motion? Mr. Goddard, why don't you come on down, sit to the side, and then take, yeah. And then I'll let you make the motion.
It's even my usual chair.
State your name and address, please.
Mark Goddard, 25 ball, eight ball, 28 ball. I can understand, from your perspective, that the delay in information is causing some problems. However, gentlemen, that's not my problem. The fact that you've spent the money to do the studies that you've done is a cost of doing business yourselves.
Goddard, I'm going to ask that you please address your comments to the Chair.
Okay, sorry.
This is not a debate with the present, the president.
I've been in the utility industry for over 40 years.
Thank you.
And regarding getting all of the information, that is paramount. You don't make decisions on expenditures of this magnitude without having, first, all of the information that you need, second, all of the documentation that is required that will obligate the town. So, if I was sitting where you're sitting, there's no way I would do anything until I had both of those pieces of equipment, or paperwork, or numbers, information, whatever. To do so, to obligate the town to do certain things, to sign and obligate the town without having all of the documents, bad idea, very dangerous. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Peter, thanks. Anyone else like to comment on the issue at the end? No. Mr. Faulkner, come on down.
I'm going to the chair. He turned off the microphone.
I didn't live.
Not addressing him, but I'm referring to him, he's talking about... Have the Board of Selectmen negotiate something. Go for odd humor, but I'm confused where the obligation is, because there isn't one, question mark? I was just, I wondered what I was missing.
As, from my perspective, what the obligation we're asking the voters for is to give us the authority to negotiate the deal, once the design is done and all the numbers are in place, and at this point, it's not approving anything, other than providing authority for, for negotiating it.
And contrary, I would disappoint if I didn't disagree with you.
Of course.
It's, it's not that we're agreeing to a contract, because we're not, I understand that piece of it, but by agreeing to move forward, it's a firm commitment that we are committed to this project.
It is not.
We're going to agree to disagree, because even, it's going to be harder to negotiate a contract in Kingston's best interest if the, the investors, let's say, already know we're committed. And I know you're saying we're not committed, but from, from the other side of the table, that it, the fact that we're moving forward and get permission from the voters to have a 35-year lease says we're committed to the project. That, in and of itself, doesn't mean the terms, I think it's harder to negotiate the terms when you already got a 35-year commitment, and that's a long time to have a straightforward commitment to boot, but that's another, that's a discussion for another time.
Can, I'm going to be difficult.
I, I just feel pushed and rushed, that's what I'm saying to you.
Isn't it our responsibility to, to be able to negotiate and to, to look at the terms? Isn't that part of what our job is?
Yeah, and another year would give us even more opportunities to have more information and have a general idea which way we're going.
But we're not signing a contract, we're, we're asking...
That's right, we're not signing a contract.
To be able to do our job is actually what we're asking to do.
Yep, and I'm saying the same thing, we're just, we're different side on that table. I think our job is to do a little more homework before we agree to this. I had no problems with a five-year obligation to pursue the project, none at all. So, I'm not against solar array, that's what I'm saying, but I'm very nervous about the landfill, and I'd like to have more input from more residents before we move forward, because we only going to have a certain amount of residents come to vote. It's not like we're going to have 4,000 come like they did for the presidential election, if we have 800, we'd be lucky.
Can I, I'm trying to learn, can I just ask what the difference, oh, we've already committed to this 35-year contract even though we haven't, but we're, we've committed to, what is it, five-year for solid waste? I don't, so, oh, it would put us in a worse negotiating position for that, I don't, I don't understand, I don't understand what the, why one is different than the other.
It's two different contracts, Adam, number one. Solid waste has spelt out what each of the years are, obligation it is.
But so would, I'm, I'm still confused.
I'd like to move forward, okay, thank you. Mr. Koppelman, you wanted to put forward a motion?
Are we done with public comment?
Well, yeah, on this issue anyways.
Well, no, I, I didn't know if anyone else wanted to speak.
It's when Ann came up.
Okay.
I guess we're moving on to the motion, or potential motion.
So, recognizing that, that some board members feel uncomfortable with this, I do not, because I believe that there's been a lot of work put into this by the committee, by, certainly by Revision, and, and that if we were being, if we were being asked at this point to approve a contract that we don't know what the terms are, clearly, I would, I would not be making this motion. But what we're asking for is to be given the authority to, to negotiate a contract if and when a design that works out financially is brought onto the table for us to review. So, with that, I'm going to make a motion that, that we authorize the, bringing forth a warrant article to the voters. Right now, on the paperwork I'm looking at, it's listed as Article 20, I don't know if it would end up to be that way, but assuming that it is, that would read as follows, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to enter into a lease agreement to lease town-owned land for construction, installation, and operation of a solar array at the landfill, with a term not to exceed 35 years, and annual revenue to the town of at least $35,000."
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
I, I think we should let the, the town vote on if they want to give us that authority or not. I think we're giving that, we're taking that option away from the town if we don't put it on board.
And I think the more educated the voters are, the better off we all will be, so...
I would, I would believe that, too, I think that if this gets, they get their information in February, the end of February, it could go into March, or May, or June, and now we're looking at, we could put it on for '26 and have more educated information. And I, again, I apologize, but this is, the night before we're supposed to have this finalized, we should have, we should have been dealing with this earlier. We, this is a big, this is a big decision, and there's a lot of feedback about a structure going on that landfill, okay? Regardless of the warranties and, you know, people go out of business every day, investors go out of business, they walk away, now we're sitting on this mess down at the dump. I mean, it's nothing against you and the business and everything else, but I just think we have to have more of an educated decision, and if, if we put it on the '26 Warren article, that's just my, again, my personal preference, and I, I do thank you for all your time, but I just, again, this is a night before, and we're kind of like, I feel like we're making this decision as a rush, I feel like I'm making this decision as a rush.
I hope you don't see much of this right here.
The microphone?
Hold on. I actually agree wholeheartedly with the public comment, we should not be making contractual decisions without all of the critical data points, 100% agreement there. That's not our ask, we plan to be here in 2026 as well. I think the deal looks worse, is my assessment, based on a lot of things that are happening, but maybe not, who knows? But I, I understand what you said, select board baking, select board member baking, and again, it's fine.
And just to be clear, we're not being asked to approve a contract, and just...
I wouldn't do that to you, that's irresponsible.
I don't think any of us would do that.
I wouldn't sign that up.
I wouldn't do that at this point. All right, Madam Chair, would you move the question, please?
I move the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. So, because we don't have majority, it does fail. I'm not saying to you, go away, I'm saying, I want you to work a little harder and keep us more informed, and I really think it would be a good idea to, to put up a Facebook page in Kingston that updates the community, educate all of us, it's not just the four or five of us on the board. This is a big deal for Kingston, and I, I'd take, I'd rather have a few baby steps in between than not at all. They're not stopping the work, is my guess.
They're probably not, but they would be a lot more proactive and wanting to do it if they knew that we were standing behind the fact that we were willing to at least look at a contract when it came to us, and I think that the vote that we just took and the decision that happened is very short-sighted on the part of, of this board.
Okay, that, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time.
To be continued. Our next appointment is with Mrs. Tammy Bakie regarding Citizens' petitions.
Good evening. This probably should have been done months or years ago, but I would like to bring it to the board's attention, that we don't have a Citizens' petition template on our website, and I think it would be a good idea to put it on there, and I have included one in, along with some information that I received from the General Counsel to the Assistant Secretary of State regarding Citizens' petitions. This is under your purview, but I think it needs to be done, and it should be done, and I'm just forwarding this information to you.
Okay, so this is, so that going forward, we would have the petition on the website, so that any individual in the community that wanted to create a petition could do so according to the rules and the regulations of the state of New Hampshire.
Correct. There are some decisions, if you read through this, that the selectman would have to make as far as who, who receives it, who verifies the signatures, all that kind of stuff, but it, make it, I know people come to my window and say, what's a, how can I get a Citizens' petition, do you have a, so, I did a little research, found some templates, and then reached out to, but Bitch from the Secretary of State's office, and he provided this information, so just wanted to forward it to you all.
All right, who, who verifies the signatures? Now, you do, right, at the South Coast Office?
No, I do not.
You, you do?
No.
Okay. All right, so we'll, this is an action item then, for the board. Thank you, Mrs. Bakie. Okay, any other public comments at this time? Okay, committee liaison reports, I'll start with Mr. Bakie.
Hang on a second, I got a note somewhere.
Okay, I'll start with Mrs. Schwett.
Okay, so we had a museum meeting last week, and really, the only, there was talk of the building needing dehumidifiers, so they are going to, they being the committee, get some quotes, so that we can purchase some dehumidifiers for the basement, because it's, the moisture's, it's not good for the artifacts down there. And I want to talk a bit, it was discussed during the budget hearing meetings, but a note taker was, had started in January, and we realized after that wasn't the case, or it shouldn't have happened, but the Budget Committee did vote to put $750 in the budget for 2025, so I guess we need to figure out how we're going to compensate that note taker for January, and if they can use them for February, March as well, because they do need one.
Any suggestions?
It's $17 an hour, so I'm sure that we could come up with that out of our contingency fund for three hours.
Where does the money come from?
Before the budget passes, I'm sorry?
This is the same person that's been helping me, very, very part-time, she hasn't been able to come in in several months, so can that come out of that? I'm not sure how that works.
Okay, that's a good suggestion as well.
So, this is...
This is what?
No, is it?
Let me, let me interrupt for a quick second here, so I took notes on this exact same thing, this was going to be one of my things, I was at the budget meeting when this all transpired, so it was relayed to us that it was $50 a meeting, a month, 12 months, $600, that was a line item they wanted at the time. So, I, I, I've never heard of the $17 an hour before, till just now, so that was, what was relayed, $50 a month, and they did do it in January, and they were just looking to have that okayed or a way to reimburse that figure. And then, obviously, now it's been approved, well, not approved, but it's on the budget line item for '25, so I'm sure it's going to go forward, so this month of January, in February?
Well, we would need it, their, their meeting is the first week of the month.
April kicks in, right?
So, it would be for three months.
Three months, okay.
Still comes out of that budget if it's passed. It's not going to come out of contingency.
So, what would it come out of in the, in the interim?
What does it come out of?
The problem, well, that, that's the $64,000 question, they don't have a line item.
Right. So... That, that's the dilemma.
But for the, we're looking at three months, right?
Yes.
Jan, December?
No.
No, January, February.
January, February, March.
March, okay.
Because their meeting is the, before town meeting, so we will know if it's passed or not.
Okay, so Susan, you were, you were just mentioning that... So Susan, you were, you were just mentioning that, is there a line in the budget, or where is that?
That money, I think, is coming out of the part-time, what do you call that, temporary part-time, where this person is helping with me, and Marissa is helping with Tammy, that's where those people are being paid.
Okay.
To my understanding.
And so we'd be looking at $150 to come out of perhaps that line?
At most.
Temporarily.
Well, for those, for that three months.
Yeah.
It's what I said, $150.
And if the budget doesn't pass, I think then we'll still have to have a discussion for the future, because all of the other committees have a note taker, and their volunteer is no longer able to do it, so.
Right. If the budget doesn't pass, I mean, if we, if we go to default budget, then obviously that, that item won't be in there, and so we'll have to have another discussion.
Paul, are any issues with that, that you see for that $150 out of that part-time budget, so we can make a vote on this and keep going?
For right now, no, but if the budget does pass, we need to make sure we reclass those amounts out of that account and put it into the museum.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a line? Do you know what the line number is?
I'm assuming it's going to be this here in the executive budget, there's no...
Is it third line down?
Yeah, in the executive budget, correct? In the executive budget, yeah.
So that would, in the executive budget, it looks like it's line 4130-S3, salaries part-time?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to take $150 from, what was that line?
4130-S3.
To pay for the note taker for the museum.
Let's get it allocated to the museum account, because they like, they, too, like to ask forgiveness instead of permission, so here we go.
So it was an honest mistake on, on the vice chair's part, she didn't understand the process, so we're trying to rectify it moving forward.
Okay. And then, the good way to do that, so is there a second?
Oh, go ahead, Peter.
Peter, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, an ayes have it.
Were you opposed, Deli?
No, I'm not opposed.
Okay.
And then, for the other committee liaisons, we had a solid waste in recycling. We're going to have a meeting last Thursday, but we didn't have a forum, so we had a working group, and we still did our brainstorming session on our hopes and dreams of what the collection center will turn into, so I have all of that data that I will be gathering. We plan to have a follow-up to that, I think, the 30th of January, but that still has to be posted. But it was a very successful meeting, we got a lot of good input, we just have to then take the next step.
A lot of work ahead.
Yep, absolutely. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Glenn?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay. See, we had a planning board meeting last week, but no hearings were held at this time. We did approve, extend the contract for the 266 Route 125 for another year, because they're still awaiting information from Department of Transportation that we thought we would have had a year ago, never mind six months ago, when they were told it was inches away, and it's still not come forward. But that's what they're waiting, is the approval on the egress and in and out of the property on 125. So that got extended at the planning board.
And so that was extending the site plan approval for a year?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Any other questions? Peter?
One thing, Tom's in the audience, he can maybe answer this question. I don't know if you're planning to come up at all tonight, but we talked roughly about, briefly about that building, that wall downstairs, and I knew you had looked at it and put a number on it, and I think you had talked to Paula, and I was just kind of curious how it, looking at, any ideas, come up with, or thought on going forward with that, to separate those two offices?
Road agent.
We do know you.
Whatever. Yeah, we looked at it, I gave Paula a rough number, 2,800 roughly in material, and I think it's a good idea. I know they were, you were, as far as funding, it could be capital improvement in the, in the building line, not, not, not a big issue. And if something you want to move forward with, then we'll absolutely get it done. I don't know what timeline, what priority, you know, no one's in that office now, I don't know what it'd be, obviously, if there's no one in the office, it's a good time to do some work in there, but that's totally up to you.
So that's probably up to the board to make the decision on that, have that wall done, that we talked about. One thing that Pedro recommended, we're actually going to swap the two sides. And the reason being is, the side on the left is smaller, and it's got the computer and everything's right there for building. And the side on the right is larger, he doesn't need that much room, and that desk that's currently there originally was on that back wall, so it'll all still fit in there.
Is time that's already there?
Yes, 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 yes. Right now, right now, they have it set up that the assessing desk is there, and the building window's over here, but the computer's over there. It would just make a little bit more sense, and the way that wall is, it's a, it's a small one, so let's just say it's like 70/30, right? That's kind of the way that wall's going to go, because of fire suppression, and they got to keep the wall, the wall can't go to the ceiling, and the wall actually has to be sheetrock for fire, right? So there's, the smaller side, he, he recommended that he took that smaller side, because the computer's there and it's all kind of set, ready to go. And then that larger side would be the assessing. The, the wall wouldn't go the whole length of the room, so there's still going to be a hallway there, right? They can still come out and go back and forth. It's just the immediate interaction with the people, that we have two definitive sides. So that was the only question that, that they had thought about, was he'd give them the larger side to support that off.
Well, I think, like you said, it really depends, too, on fire suppression and all that, right? So that, that's really...
Yeah. That's kind of where the wall's got to go, but he was willing to take that smaller side.
No, that's great. I think that's, that's absolutely so.
It's more of a, it's more of a petitioning the office than, than walls. It's more of a...
Separate them, separate them. But it's still a separation.
It's a separation without...
It's a separation.
Yeah, without needing extensive reconstruction or moving...
And Tom brought up that back corner where that desk was, there is computer there.
Yeah.
Everything's there for that.
Should be.
So you're going to need a computer for the other side, then?
Yeah.
Yeah. Once, once that's figured out, we can figure out the logistics as far as IP and that's why.
Correct.
If that's, makes sense for where the wall is.
So should we take a vote on that wall when he's sitting here, so we know? Are we in favor of that, having to go forward with that construction?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I'm fine with that.
To separate the wall, should we need to take a vote, or just give him a thumbs up?
Thumbs up.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom. Next, one last thing that came up at the, the budget meeting. Chief Johnson put in a, I believe it was a $10,000 raise item for overtime.
Yeah.
To cover, he's down quite a few people. He's got one officer out with a medical, and his curious was, he's trying to, these guys and girls, the team, have been helping each other cover all the schedules, and they've been really working hard, and they're not being, I guess, greedy with their vacation time, because they can't be right now. So his question was, if they bring it over to next year, right now, they're all going to have to use their vacation time in 90 days, and that may expend that $10,000 from the first 90 days of the year, because now you have to pay overtime to cover these guy, guys and girls taking their vacation time off.
Well, if I remember correctly, there was only one or two that had about a week of each. Most of it was hours, a few hours here and there.
Okay.
I don't think we should carte blanche, carte, give a carte blanche on it, because it impacts other employees throughout the town.
Okay.
It's not just the police department. So if there are exceptions that need to be accommodated, let's take care of them as they, as needed.
Okay.
Because it's, I don't want to set a new precedent without thinking it the whole way through, and there wasn't that many that had a ton of hours.
So we could say case by case?
Yes, and an individual case, the chief could ask for dispensation, if you will.
Okay. I'll let him know.
The right word or not, I don't know.
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Liaison reports are set. We next have the assessing contract for Whitney Consulting, and we do have the contract here, there were some revisions, there was one that didn't get changed that on the first, just initial it so you recognize it. It lists that the assessing reports to the town administrator, which we don't have, so it should be the Select Board. So I just initial that and get signed it, and we want to vote on the contract as a whole, that's been reviewed by Finance and Attorney and Susan, so...
And it's been to the DRA as it has to be.
The DRA, excuse me, yeah. Everyone's, everyone's had a look, and...
We still set up at that, so we'll come work with you.
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Katie will continue to be our, our assigned assessor with the new company.
Good.
So based on the fact that this has been reviewed by multiple parties and appears to be satisfactory, and what we had talked about and agreed to, I'll make a motion to, to approve, that the Select Board approve the new con, the new assessing contract with Whitney Consulting Group LLC.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, the next item is the draft warrant articles for this year, including the bridge grant article that was withdrawn from the budget and put into a separate warrant article.
There's a flurry of changes today, but I think most of what you've got in front of you, you'll see some things that are highlighted, and go through, hit them one by one if you need to.
Okay, there is one that I asked Susan to draft on our behalf, and that is item number, well, we're talking, we should talk about the bridge grant, too.
Can we go in order as I question?
Oh, sure, all right. All right, let's go from the top.
So, so, okay, we'll go ahead.
Article one is just the election of officers for the town, that's pretty standard, and two through...
Eight.
Eight are all zoning articles.
Right, which had public hearings, which were proposed by planning board and have already had their public hearings.
Correct. That is correct. So the next one is number nine, which is the operating budget for the year, and it's from this budget that the bridge grant was withdrawn. Even though it's an in-and-out item, there were members of the Budget Committee that felt important, that it looked like it inflated, falsely inflated the budget, and would be better as a separate warrant article. We run, I don't know what happens if, for some reason, the voters don't approve it, but I, I hope it goes, I'm assuming it's going to go through.
Well, and I...
Yeah, we'll talk about the bridge grant when we get to it. Let's not...
All right, now, we can leave it at that.
So these numbers are the ones that were from the hearing without the $1 million, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And I believe the contingency was up for discussion, and that, that will be brought up again at the hearing this coming Saturday, because I, it's my understanding that we may have to have the contingency voted on as a separate warrant article.
And that's why we have Article 11. Because it wasn't in the last time, yeah.
Sure, come on up, Paul. Well, that's not right either, from what we had Saturday, I don't think that's... Hold on.
So I, on Saturday, when it was discussed, I emailed NHMA Legal, and they did confirm, and I have it in confirmation, and I looked it up in the RSA.
Okay.
We have to, I can't tell you why, I've never seen it in other towns, really, but we are supposed to have a warrant article every year to ask for contingency fund.
Okay.
I have it, hold on.
All right, no, I, I believe you researched it, and that, that's all we need to know.
Yep, so I created this, somebody told Stacy, that's why she put it on hold, some of it, and she said she had to look it up, so I got the answer. And towns may, RSA 3198 states, towns may establish a contingency fund by an article separate from the budget and all other articles in the warrant for the annual meeting. Every town annually by an article may establish such a fund, and that's, so that's what they said. So then I looked up in the budget book that we have, and the warrant articles, like sample warrant articles, and I drafted Article 11.
Okay, thank you.
So it says, if you're going to have a contingency fund, it has to be by a warrant article?
Every year.
It can't be in the budget?
Can't be in the budget, it has to be in one article every year.
Right, that is correct. That's what your sister said.
No, just clarifying, making sure. So for right now, I put it at 80,000, and with the understanding that one of the 30,000 of that, the Budget Committee said they would talk about on this Saturday, and it might get moved back into the budget.
Yes, because if I remember on Saturday's discussion, we said that the 30 could go into the executive budget.
They just had never made that decision.
Okay, that was never voted on exactly.
They never officially, they were, she was waiting.
Okay.
So that number might change to 50, and then 30 will go to the full budget.
Okay.
So is the number in Article 9 for our budget, is that what that, can you take it out?
No, this is what was approved by the Budget Committee so far, so I left it as that is, because that's what they approved.
Let's make sure we fix that on Saturday, because...
Oh, yes, it will be. It was...
We can do it.
I just, I can't change what they approved, so...
No, no, that, that's great. All right, and then, let's see, the firefighter, and the next one we review is number 14, Fire Apparatus Fund. We'll be voting on that Saturday as well, the board and the Budget Committee. Questions on that? The, the truck, did we split the truck up into two articles, Paul? Or going to?
So this was also discussed, and when I sent this to our attorneys, because I needed her guidance a little bit, she said to, we had to split it, even though in the past we had a warrant article, I think it was 2014 or something, the last time we got one of these tankers. It was one warrant article, but now, she said we have, we should split it, and she into two, saying that we're raising inappropriate, because what happened is there's only 710,000 in the Fire Apparatus Replacement Fund right now. We need, they need 735,000. So to do that, we wanted to raise an additional 50,000, so that once we withdraw 735, we still have like 25,000 left in that account for the future. So we have to split that into two warrant articles, and that's what I did right here.
Okay.
So 50,000 is to be raised and appropriated, to be added to the Fire Apparatus Capital Reserve Fund, and then we're, the second article is asking to withdraw, raise and appropriate 735,000, withdraw that, and whatever's remaining in the fund stays in there. And if Article 14 fails, then this article would be null and void.
If Article 14 fails, what...
If that adding the 50,000 fails...
Yeah.
Then this article will be null, like it won't count.
They'll be able to buy it now.
Yes.
Correct. And it, and it says so right at the end of Article 15.
Yep.
It says if Article 14 fails...
14 fails, it should, it'll not be null. Okay.
Yep. And there's no tax impact for that second part, because it's in a trust fund, and it's already been raised.
Correct.
Right, the tax impact is on the 50,000.
Yes.
Yep.
Number 18. This is the bridge grant, 900, Steve, the town will raise and appropriate 964,260 dollars of purpose of designing, engineering, permitting, and constructing a bridge to Main Street.
So, again, I want to thank Lisa for kind of spearheading this. My understanding, this is the current, this is the numbers for the current grant, but there's also a possibility with the next phase that they're going to give us more money, and it could be up to 1.2 million that they could give us. I'm proposing, it's also my understanding that our matching grant is coming from the state, and our total for the matching grant is $140,000 and something, some change. state, and our total for the matching grant is $140,000 and something, some change. I'm proposing that we word the warrant article to be able to raise and appropriate the sum of, just bear with me for a second. If our matching grant, our total is $140,000, we make it so we can't take any more, so it would be like 1.4 million, that we can't accept any, we can't accept any more than what our matching grant is, so that we always have our matching grant. So, because we can word that, this, no more than, I mean, that's all we're saying. This is all about the zero tax impact. And if we have the matching funds, the way this is working right now, if we get more money, we can't accept it. And we know more money's coming.
Well, is that true? I mean, that's never been true before, because you have a hearing and you accept the grant money. I think we're making it more complicated.
We're not making it more complicated.
Okay.
More money's coming, we just don't, Lisa, she doesn't have that exact number yet, more money's coming.
And that is why I put a million dollars into the budget, because I knew more money was coming.
But I think it's even more than a million.
Well, that's what Josh from CMA gave me, that's the number he gave me a month ago when I talked to him and put it in the budget. Then you guys had the attorneys draft this, or you, somebody drafted this with these numbers, that's why these numbers are in here.
Well, that's from the original.
Well, that's why these numbers are in here. So it had to be drafted with numbers. So if it's going to be over a million, then we put a million. We've already received the bridge grant of 142,902 dollars. We've already received that, we've already spent it. So, and Josh from CMA confirmed that, we've already spent that. So we've already covered the 10% that we need to.
And just for clarity, if we spent it, we can still count it as match for this?
Yes.
Because sometimes when you spend the money.
It's all still counted, so once this goes through. And we start getting, having to get reimbursed.
Right.
We will, it all gets counted in. So we've already spent what we have to cover.
So, so.
And that's why I worded it in here, that it's already been raised.
Right, it has, but I think the number's 1.2 million that we're going to get in the grant, so we need to write it so we can accept that.
Well, then I need to be given that number.
Oh, Paula, this is the draft.
Well.
Okay, so just let me finish. We can word this, because we don't have an exact number. We know that we have met unmatched, so we can word this to say no more than 100, 1.3 million dollars, with the match having already been met.
The magic words are up to.
Yes, exactly, that is what I'm trying to convey.
That's why you have an editor here at the table.
Thank you. So because we don't have an exact number, we need to cover our bases, but it can't be higher than what our 10% matches that we wanted.
Okay.
So then, what would that number be?
Well.
1.42 million.
Yes.
Is 10, well, 142,000 is 10%.
Exactly, right, but I mean, that's probably, it doesn't matter as long as it's a zero tax impact, and we don't go over our limit. So if we say 1.2 million, we're definitely covered.
Up to.
No, you got it.
Up to.
Yeah.
Tom, I know you want to say something.
Well, yeah, no, I agree. If we're going to do a warrant article, which we are, apparently, that was my first question, do we all agree this? Because it is a risk. If no is no. But, that being said, because I don't even think, Lisa will hear from Josh probably tomorrow or the next day, she expected it today. But I don't even think, this is just my own feeling, that it'll be a close number, but it might not be exact, because what, you know, we don't even know when it's going to get signed. So I think you're correct in saying, as long as we can make it clear as a bell, that it's no tax impact, and cross our fingers that the voters read that. I see no harm in saying, okay, like you said, just as you said, as long as we're, it seemed, I always hate to see big numbers, but in this case, because I don't think you're going to give a clear answer until, you know, they had one, but that was 2022, '23, you know, numbers change. So I think that's the right way to go if we're doing the warrant article.
And I would suggest 1.4 million dollars up to, because that's the outside amount.
Right.
Not 1.2. If we have 1.2, we can only accept 1.2.
Exactly.
So I'd rather be, I err on the side of the state being generous, as opposed to slashing and lowering budgets, which is what they're going to do, but.
Yeah.
That's another story.
And as long as we have, we know what that number is for that 10%, we just don't want to go over that.
And we do know, because that's already been processed, and that's, that's why I say 1.420,000, that would be the exact number, up to 1.42.
Up to. So then Article 18, to follow this logic, would then read, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of up to 1.42?
420.
1.42, whatever million.
Yeah.
And then when we get down to the part where it talks about the 10% match, that number needs to change as well, does it not?
Right, 142,000.
Okay, yeah, I got that, yeah.
That needs to be 142,000.
I'm uncomfortable putting it as a separate warrant article, but I.
I am too.
Because we've done it for so many years as part of the budget. If you think it's going to make a difference, okay, I just hope we don't lose the grant because of it, that's all I, we have another chance to vote, and I'm not opposed to doing it, I just, it's the first time.
Sure.
I know you don't like me when I say we've done this rather the same way.
It's not you, I just, we have to start looking.
No, I know it's not personal.
We have to start looking at other ways to get to an answer.
And if it doesn't work, we won't do it the next year.
No, we can put it.
Yeah, and hopefully, if it doesn't work, they'll still, we can still be in the mix with it, for the grant.
My guess is we probably could have a special town meeting to be able to accept and expend.
Hopefully.
It is a whole nother process, I'm sure.
Right, and I agree, I would much rather prefer to see it in the budget as well. However, given the situation that we're in this year, I mean, I would rather bet that voters would pass a warrant article that has no tax impact than they are, the better chance of that than passing the full budget.
With that number in it.
With that number?
With that, with that grant, with that bridge grant, in that.
Yes.
Yes, I agree with you. So my, here's a question.
So it's a gamble.
It is.
It is.
Either way, I just think that the odds are, odds are better doing it this way.
The way I have it is that the grant match of 142,902, which I'll change, which has previously been raised and appropriated in prior years, and currently in the unassigned fund balance, because that is technically where it is, because we've already raised it and spent it. This special warrant article will be a non-lapsing appropriation per RSA 3276, and will not lapse until the construction of the Main Street Bridge is completed or by 26 months from the date of the award, whichever occurs first.
Is that 26, I'm sorry, is that 26 months the appropriate number?
Yes.
Paula, is it necessary to write where the money's currently sitting? Is that too much information?
Nope, you have to put, because it, you have to, and if you look at what the prior, the other towns, they did the same thing, you have to put where the money came from.
No, I understand where it came from, but you're saying it's sitting in an unaccounted, unanticipated.
Because that's, that's where it is, we've already expended it.
My question is, is that too much information?
No.
Does it matter where it's sitting? It matters where it came from.
It matters where it's sitting, because that's where it is, right now.
Okay, all right, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay. So let's see how this works. All right, number 20. Oh, that's another one, just, yeah, yeah.
I have a question on 19. Because we're asking, do we need to put an estimated tax impact of zero? Because we're asking to create a revolving fund. Do we want to make sure that it's clear that it's estimated tax zero? Tax, you're not asking for any money. I understand that, but people might see revolving fund and under, you know, does it hurt to make sure that it says tax impact is zero?
Well.
It's, I don't, well, I don't think it's appropriate to put it on there, because you don't have any money in there.
Okay, just asking a question.
Is it, is it appropriate to have some, a statement at the end saying that, not that there's no tax impact, but there are no funds being requested?
Right, no funds will be requested till next year.
No?
This is literally, this is how you have to write this warrant.
Okay.
I just want to add something about the bridge grant. I think it was money expended out for guardrails, so I don't know if that has to be deducted from 142,000. Okay, that is the money we received.
The money that came in.
Okay.
Money that came in and was spent.
Right.
Right. We have spent 142,000.
Yeah, come up to the table, guys.
I have the breakdown, we have spent 142,000. We spent actually 180 minus 3, so 175,000 on this, because we have outstanding purchase orders from CMA.
On the bridge project.
On the bridge project.
Okay.
And we have to count those outstanding purchase orders.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Article 21. This is the one I was referred to at the beginning of the meeting, to see if the town will vote to rescind Article 46, passed by the town meeting in 1995, requiring that the creation of any permanent full-time or permanent part-time position be submitted to the voters at town meeting for approval, because this directive and limitation is unlawful and does not comply with RSA 41:8. It was my initiative that put forward, I'm taking a page from my colleague's book to my left, saying, I'm asking permission before I ask for forgiveness. So this year, I'm asking permission, and I might come before you next year and say, I'm going to ask forgiveness. But this year, I thought we'd go, take the high road, ask the voters, explain to them that we need to do this for the benefit of the town in the long term.
What makes it unlawful?
RSA 41:8, because we have the authorization as a select board to hire the necessary employees to manage the business of the town.
Yeah, I just wanted to hear, because I'm looking at it, and I think I knew the answer, I just wanted to.
Okay. I mean, I still need your, I mean.
So didn't, didn't we, didn't we have some input from counsel on this?
Yes.
Yep.
I think it's in your.
Is it in the packet?
Yes. It is in the packet.
So essentially, the part about us managing credential affairs of the town, performing the duties of law, which, we can't do that if we have to ask.
And wait.
To hire, right, right, right.
I mean, it's part of the reason we had the problems in the assessing department downstairs, we need some help.
Sure.
We need some help, that is the bottom line, and.
So, I'm trying to understand how this works. So.
All it does.
I know, but what they're saying is that, that we shouldn't have been asking to put those on the ballot anyway, so why are we rescinding something if it wasn't legal in the first place?
Because it was.
That's what I'm saying, excuse me.
I think because it was voted, and now you can't ignore it.
But is it binding? If they turn it down, can we still move ahead and hire people without a vote?
This is the ask permission rather for goodness. Technically, we had the authorization all along, but we lived up to that obligation as voted in 95, that was 30 years ago.
Right, right.
Things have changed a lot in 30 years.
Right.
So I'm saying that let's ask them to rescind that action. If they don't rescind it, technically, we could next year actually say, okay, we're going to hire anyways. I don't want to, I don't want to go that route, I really don't, I'd rather do, take the high road, and this is the high road.
Well, and I'm just trying to understand if they, if they say no, you still have to put it to the, if it's not a lawful thing anyway, do we then have to, do we just disregard the vote, say, okay, we're going to do it anyway?
At that point, it would be considered advisory, and.
It already is advisory.
Has the choice to.
But the town never, the town, town select board for the last 30 years have considered that as binding.
Right.
Yes.
But even though technically it is an advisory warrant.
Right.
So we didn't need to follow it, but we have. So if, by putting this in, it's asking the town people to.
It's telling the voters.
Go back and remove their original request. And if it doesn't pass, it's up to the board if they want to ignore it or not.
Yep.
Okay.
But I, so I said, I'd rather take the high road. And that, I thank you for that.
And I'm, and I'm fine with that. I think that's, I think that's the right thing to do. I do.
Good. Do we need a motion to officially put it on the warrant? Okay, can I have a motion to that effect?
I can make a motion to put Article 21 in.
Which is going to be Article 20 now.
Yeah, Article 20.
They have to be renumbered.
To see if the town will vote to rescind Article 46, passed by the town meeting in 1995, requiring that the creation of any permanent full-time or permanent part-time position be submitted to the voters at town meeting for approval, because this directive and limitation is unlawful and does not comply with RSA 41:8.
Do I have a second?
Ma'am.
A discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, that's it for warrant articles at this time. There may be revisions come Saturday, not new ones, but revisions to these accordingly.
You repeat the numerical order of warrant articles? When they were received?
No.
No, the RSA is actually a layout.
Go ahead, Paula, come on down.
There is, there is an order.
There is an order of importance.
There's a very specific order, so planning and zoning has to go first, then the budget, actually, I.
Well, it's.
Who, what positions are up, and then the planning and zoning, then the budget.
Right.
Then that 1% for town clerk, then, and everything else, not counting petition warrant articles, those go at the very bottom, so everything else. And then you put that everything else, you want to strategically put them in a specific order, so that once the 10% rule goes into effect, the ones that you feel are more important monetarily are up higher, so that those numbers get used for that 10%.
Thank you.
And hang in there too, Paula, for a second. No, 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 just wait a minute, just sit there for a second. And, does that clarify?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right.
I got it.
The next item is, we have new business, and my reason I asked Paula to sit there for a second, she has advised me that putting together, we have applications for the highway department, and so we need to put together a hiring committee. And Paula's record, has worked on the procedures, is that correct?
I know, it's the same procedure, but that is how the hiring committee should be.
The hiring committee would consist of two current full-time department heads, two select board members, and a road agent or highway director from a neighboring town.
A non-neighboring town.
A non-neighboring town, okay. Yeah, this is for the hiring committee. I'd like to suggest.
So it was a, two department heads, two select board, and one?
Two full-time department heads.
Two.
Two select board members.
And then.
And then one highway, highway slash road agent.
From another community.
From another town, which it shouldn't be a surrounding town and.
Because?
Applicants could be from the surrounding town, so we don't want.
Yeah, we're probably not going to be able to get too far afield though, because, you know, people aren't going to want to travel long distances.
I'm not saying like go to Hong Kong, but like.
But not like an immediately adjacent.
Not like Atlanta, or back in San Francisco.
Right.
Raymond Dexter.
Yep.
Yes. A little, you know.
I'd like to take the liberty of asking Lori and Peter to serve, and that is the two select board reps. Is that okay?
Yep.
I was going to, yes, absolutely, that's great.
I thought that would be appropriate.
Yep.
Department heads, any preferences, or who, which, police of fire, who works more with highway? They both work a lot.
I think that both of them would do the right ones.
Yep.
Okay, then we could have those two? And then ask, maybe the committee could ask a neighboring person, or?
That is the plan, yeah. So once that committee then they'll decide what, and that's why I go to, I don't know if I've used it ever, but I always.
Okay, I think it just came to me.
And then before they decide what towns we had, we'll ask the director.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
On that same, on, on the same topic?
Yep.
Um, I know we, we had set a date for the first of February, but do we have a date on, is it the first of February we're gonna see the applicants? Or do we have to make a decision by the first of February?
No, we can't do by, I, I just.
So we need, we probably should set a date. We need to contact these people and set something up.
The committee's gotta get together, get organized, set up some dates.
As soon as you guys get together, I think the four of you should get together, find out who the other town person is going to be, and then get a date, let me know and I'll tell the applicants.
Okay.
Yep. And as soon as you have a decision is when we close the, um.
The posting.
The posting.
Thank you.
I'll take the action to con, to email the four of us to come up with a, a meeting so we can figure out who, what town, and then we can get back to Paula.
Do you want me?
Oh, okay.
So who's, who do you wanna contact the town, you're saying?
Well, it's me, you, and then, um, Joel Graham. So just an emails for the four of us so we can have a quick chat, figure out what town, and we'll let Paula know, and then we can schedule the interviews.
Perfect. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other new business or board business?
Um, yes, I, I have a few things.
Okay.
Um, so I wanna talk, I'm probably gonna get daggers here, but I wanna talk about the wage matrix. It was. It was painfully obvious on Saturday that, um, we, we just didn't have the data to be able to put the right dollar amount in the salary lines for all the departments. And a, as a select board member, I, I feel like our hands are tied because we don't have the data. So I'm requesting that we see the data. We haven't seen the data. Um, I, I think that, and I don't care what format's in, but we need to see the data to include all the updated job descriptions. Um, it was stated numerous times that it was really complicated to finish the town hall and public works. And, um, and therefore it couldn't be completed. And numerous times it was also brought up that we should've just paid for it.
Paula, I disagree with that.
I know, hear me out. Um, so there was just so much conversation, hours worth of conversation, not just on Saturday, but for clearly, right? You know, you've lived it for a year and a half. Um, so I, we, I think the, if we can see the data, the board can then de- decide what we need to do to move forward.
And I, and I have no objections to that. I'm not gonna throw any daggers. That's a very reasonable request.
Right. No, I'm just talking about wage matrix. It's just like a four-letter word.
I get it. It's not a four-letter word. It's very frustrating because so much effort has gone into it. The data is available. It's just not available so we could, even I haven't seen the final data because the file is so big, it, and we have to break it out. And we have to rely on Stacy to do that in order for us to be able to look at it. The, it's complicated only because of the diversity of the job descriptions. The, the job, the job that the individuals are doing. It's not.
That's good. That's good.
But, but I totally agree with you and, and, and I'll follow through with Stacy to figure out a way that we can get it broken down to smaller segments so we can print it out and see it.
It, it, it needs to happen.
I, I understa-
Because we.
You're not the only one frustrated by that.
I understand that, but from a public perspective, we need to figure out what we're gonna do next year because we cannot wait until budget season next year and then have the same result where there's two departments that, that aren't using, you know, revenue perfectly clear that they don't have an adopted wage matrix, but they do have a tool to be able to.
Correct.
Two departments out of four. So, so what happens to the rest of the employees? So it's not, we don't have any kind of standard way to reward our employees. So that's a problem. It creates a morale problem. I mean, it just creates a lot of problem. It put, it put our town clerk in a very awkward position having to do what she did because we didn't have the data. So we need to ensure that we get the, and then we can figure out what our next step is. Do we, do we pay for somebody? Do, do we go back to a salary pool and make it? I, I don't know, but it, it can't, we can't wait and, and wait until next budget season to have the same compensation.
I, I agree with that one hundred percent. But I'll tell you a big obstacle you're gonna have. It's a volunteer who did it all. We didn't pay that person to do it. It's like if you work for a company and you develop something, the company owns it because they, you're on the payroll. You're an employee of the company. But, and I hate to say this, but I mean, I think when we, we start trying to, I'm as beside myself that we haven't got this. I, I really am because we have no idea what we're looking at. But as we try to muscle our way into this, it, it might be one of the baby steps. Again, that's, that's the problem from day one.
Yeah, but that was being done, yes, it was a volunteer, but it was done on a, on a designated town committee. And the results of that work belong to the town. I'm sorry.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
And, and even if, even if we have to print it and it's this high, we should have that.
Correct. I, I agree with you. I mean, it's, it's just a tough thing when, like you said, when you, you actually hit the nail on the head, that a service that probably we should've paid for, right? And then we'd have this. It's a little different. I mean, it's just, I, I agree, I agree with you. I, I agree with it. It's a committee. I agree with the whole thing. And I'm just disappointed we don't, we don't have the information.
We need to stop beating up on the person that put all that effort into it.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. No, 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 no. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Come on, guys. Your point is wrong.
About this in non-public because you are referring to a volunteer resident and four department heads. We are not, this isn't a personal attack. It is because you.
All right, all right. Listen, guys.
I was on this committee for a year and a half and worked my butt off, off hours to get this information. And then a volunteer also worked her butt off to get this information. And two other department heads worked to get this information. And we have gotten no respect from anybody about this, this wage matrix. We did so much research. This one spreadsheet is so large. She is trying to get it to us. You guys added thirty thousand to the budget so that you can make proper decisions by April first. You do not need this right this second, and you should not be discussing on how upset and dis, and, and and mad that you did not get this information from a volunteer in public. I'm sorry. You should.
I'm not sure what to say next, except that we need.
This is a public discussion. It involves our public employees and their compensation. It is not a personal attack on any one person.
Okay, what other item did you have you wanted to bring up?
Did you have anything?
Well. I have some interesting information. And I, I did this on my own. Did not ask the board for permission to do it. So if, if I'm asking for permission after the fact, well, consider that done.
To put it in my book.
Well, there you go.
This is to forgive this thing.
There you go. So, you know, in, all of us have been thinking about and working with the issue of pay matrices, compensation, so forth. So just out of curiosity, I did a little, little sleuthing around and to see if I could find if another community, not a Manchester, but a community more like our, our size, had done one of these. And lo and behold, I came up with one, and I'm happy to, I made one print copy. I'm happy to share it with you or send it to you electronically for the town of Barrington, which as it turns out has almost the exact number of classif, classification of positions that we do, which is like forty-five or forty-six was the number I came up with. You could correct me if I'm wrong, but.
Oh, for the town?
Yeah. Okay.
That was one of the ones we had.
Yeah, and, and, and roughly, roughly a similar range of, of town residents, I think. I, don't quote me, but, so. On, on their website, it turned out that they had a copy of this, of the matrix, and it's got all the stuff. It was done by Municipal Resources, Inc., MRI, which is a firm in the state that does a lot of this stuff. They also do studies for towns. They also provide part-time, uh, staff if town needs them, towns need them. They do master plans. They do all kinds of stuff. Well, it turns out that I know some of the folks at MRI, so I reached out to them today. And I said, you know, could you tell me what it would cost to do a report similar to what Barrington has? And they said, well, tell us how many classifications you've got. Uh, we'll look up the, the stats for Kingston and, um, we'll, we'll throw you a number. So I've got a number.
Throw it at us.
Would you like to hear it?
I would.
Maybe I should just read.
Go right in.
The email response that I got from them.
Okay.
And this is from, I, we're in a public meeting. Can I say this in public? I think I can. It's, it's from Carol Granfield, who is the director of their Human Resources Services.
Okay.
Okay. There were some pleasantries at the beginning because as it turns out, I had some interaction with this person when I used to work for the state. And this person was a town administrator at the time. Okay. After the pleasantries, she says, "I met with the Kingston Select Board back in twenty eighteen and provided information at that time regarding conducting a classification and compensation study, and at that time the town did not move forth. An estimate to conduct a full study for approximately forty-five positions is eighteen thousand dollars. We always work with communities to determine what components they are interested in, such as development slash update of pay and classification plan, benefit review, recommendations to provide total compensation and survey and recommendations for valid plans that will assist the town with both recruitment and retention of qualified employees. Many communities have been struggling to meet the needs due to, to, to meet these needs due to current competitive environment. Uh, please let me know if you have any additional questions and I'd be happy to discuss with you. So, um, so that's the number, uh, you know, roughly. I mean, it wasn't, it's not a quote. It's a.
No, and that's also from seven years ago.
No, no, no. That's today. That's how much it would cost today.
Okay.
Yes. Um, and the result would be something similar to this. So I suggest that perhaps I distribute this to all the board members, let you have a, a gander at it and see if it's even something that, uh, you think would fit our needs. How would that be?
You, yes. We did look at Barrington. That's one of the towns in the survey.
But did you look at their report, their, their matrix study?
They had that.
I'm pretty sure we did.
We did.
I'm pretty sure we did.
You had their pay matrix?
Yeah. It's one of the towns that was included in our survey.
Okay.
So you've seen, so you've seen this report?
But understanding the cost, it was only eighteen thousand dollars to do?
Well, it was, it was less than that for this because it was, yeah, we didn't know that.
We didn't know that. The, the cost of the study is not a question we asked.
Right.
Okay. That they had a study is what we asked for.
Okay.
And they gave it to us. But you should distribute it to the full board anyways.
Okay. Because I, I certainly can't make the judgment about whether or not all the data that's in here is, is the kind of stuff that we're looking for. But when I looked at it, it, it kinda looked like it was in the right direction. So. Do you want me to share it with you as well, Paula? Okay. Susan, I'll make sure that you're on the distribution list as well. Okay. I will, I will do that.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, if it is something that, you know, the board and the town decides might be appropriate, then it's something we could think about for, uh, next year.
Okay.
Thanks.
Or a few months down the road.
Well, ne, for next year, but for discussion starting very soon.
Anything else, Lori?
Um, I think the next item's probably non-public. Um, but I do, there's, um, a bill that was introduced this year, HB one sixty-eight, and it's relative to including municipal public works facilities as eligible capital facilities for the assessment of impact fees. Currently, we, they're, so they're changing what you can, they're expanding what you can charge impact fees on. Currently, public works is not one of them. So the bill was just introduced. So I'm tracking it. Um, so that would be something that we should definitely look at if it's best.
And it probably goes through the planning board.
Uh-huh.
Not through the board.
Yeah, I, I know, but I'm just bringing it up because I think that's, um, good information to know.
It, it's also probably not a bad time for planning board to, and for the town, to consider looking at our impact fee ordinance to see if we're caught up to date on that as far as, you know, numbers and all of that. And, and if it's, if there's the opportunity to add, uh, another category, then it might be a good time to do it.
We have a couple of, um, veterans credit forms in the armage folder to go through. And there's a facilities use from self to use a town hall upstairs meeting room. Is that your square dance?
Oh, that's me. Self. That's, that's me.
Oh. Like yourself. It's the counter dances, right? Okay. All right.
It doesn't have a.
Okay.
Oh, I think you have an initial there, just so we can.
Yeah, we're gonna change it.
What's that?
Public comment?
Public comment number two.
Oh, yeah, we have a.
Yeah, we, we went over.
Sorry, my apologies.
First of all, I'd like to, again, um, repeat that January twenty-second through the thirty-first is the filing period. Candidates' night will be February nineteenth, Wednesday at six-thirty. There's a snow day of Thursday, the twentieth. I would also like to thank Tom's crew, Steve and Rich for all the hard work they've done in the last month downstairs and upstairs. Take a look around. This town hall has never looked this good. And I would hope that people have enough respect to keep it this way.
What was that last comment?
I, I didn't hear the end of that, Tammy. I'm sorry.
We'd hope that department heads, committee members, people that use this room will have enough respect to keep it this clean and this neat and organized.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I have a question about one of the POs.
Okay.
Um, Lisa had a thing about.
Disregarding it.
Disregarding, and then this is all crossed through and we're signing it, so I don't have to.
I, I had signed it before. I realized that was, that Lisa had a note in there.
It can't be used after.
Oh, we cannot?
I told her it can. We have to pay that bill, and then I will rean, get, I have to send an invoice in a letter to the church to ask for their portion of the amount back.
Oh, so they reimburse the town?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So who crossed, who, like this big X? I don't wanna sign something that has a big slash through it.
There's, the one I have in my folder shouldn't have an X in it.
But we just did it.
We just did it. I just, I just did it. Based on, based on the thing that said recent, don't, don't do it.
Can you reprint another one for us so we can sign it? Thank you. And other items. Oh, so do we, so the, the self, the, the, the counter dance request is pending the contingent by the stores, the stairs being completed downstairs by January twenty-fifth. What is the likelihood? Any idea?
January twenty-fifth?
Yeah. By no cigar. So January twenty-fifth is probably questionable is what he's trying to say. You've got six days.
Right, right. My agreement a long time, let me step aside.
This is, this is me, Paul.
Okay.
Glenn Koppelman, one oh eight, Exeter Road. So, um, my agreement a long time ago with the select board was that I would submit requests for the once-a-month event in six months, six-month increments so that the, the select board wouldn't have to obligate too far out. So every six months, uh, I do a request, um, for the fourth, typically the fourth Saturday of each month, excluding July and November, but otherwise it's the fourth Saturday of each month. And, and at the last, the last time that the request went in, um, it was, it was discussed that we wouldn't allow it to go further until the front steps were, were completed.
So do you, do you have a suggestion? Should we approve February through, I mean, we can approve all six if the stairs are done, and then if they're not complete for January twenty-fifth, you can't have it here?
That's fine.
Okay. Does that make sense? We'll put that as part of the motion. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve it pending the stairs being completed? And that's for January.
Second.
Twenty-fifth, February twenty-second, March twenty-second, April twenty-sixth, May twenty-fourth, and June twenty-eighth. Further discussion?
Just a point of information. This is, this is not, the town is not providing the space gratis. It's rented at, at the rate of seventy-five dollars per night. So just FYI.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? One. So it's three, oh, yeah, three zero one. Okay, so that should go in the orange folder. It doesn't need to be signed, right? This does not need to be signed. Okay.
It did, it did go through Police of Fire.
Police of Fire, yes. It's all signed up in the bottom.
Okay, good.
Yep. Um, you have a, a non-public item you want to discuss?
Yeah, there's.
Under what?
There's probably three or four items that probably need to be discussed. Um.
Do we want to, did we do minutes?
No, we didn't do minutes yet. Okay, uh, can I have a motion for the minutes, both public and non-public?
I'll move approval of public and non-public minutes for our meetings, meeting on January sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, so what's the motion to go non-public?
Motion to go into non-public pursuant to RSA ninety-one, the one about reputation. So that would be.
Okay, and a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, uh, roll call. Lori?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yeah.
Me, yes, and Peter, yes. Thank you all. Oh, you did, okay.